Good morning, everyone. So glad to have you with us this morning to address the county business. At this time, I'll call the Paulding County Board of Commissioners work session for July 28th, 2020 to order. And Mr. Marshall, if you'd bring that list forward. To welcome all invited guests and elected participants this morning. Sheriff Gullidge. Did I miss anybody, guys? Thank you. We'll begin our meeting with our standard invocation and pledge to the flag. And Pastor Darrell Jones from Sweetwater Baptist Church is here. He's also gonna pray for a special citizen of Paulding County and lead us in the pledge to the flag. Please stand if you're able.
Hey, before I pray, just 60 seconds, okay? 60 seconds. So, thank you, guys, for letting me be here. Wanted to share one verse of Scripture with you. I actually preached it Sunday. It took a lot longer, but don't let them know it, okay? Because I can do it in 60 seconds. So, anyways, been in leadership the last 30 years myself, 20 as a pastor, 11 to 13 years at a local dealership here, responsible for millions of dollars in inventory, 500 to 600 cars a month, and that's what we were reporting there. And I ran across this verse of Scripture that just blew me away. You know the story. Moses goes up to the top of the mountain, right? He receives the law. He comes down. He was there 40 days and 40 nights. He comes down, Aaron and his brother and all the nation of Israel are there in sin, actually. They done melted the gold, they done melted or put together this calf, they began to worship it. And he's got, "Thou shall not have any other gods before me," right? He smashes the tablet. God's mad, Moses is mad, 600,000 Israelites are just in sin. And as a leader, you can only imagine the discouragement that he must be in. All of us face that kind of thing. But listen, and my reaction was this, how did he react to that? What would be our reaction? Number one, some folks would say, "I quit," right? "I don't want no more. I'm done." Or he could say, "God, please allow me to have greater leadership skills." Okay? He didn't do that. Or he could've said, "Send lightning down and take care of them," right? I mean, just being honest. But you know what he did? This is one verse of Scripture. And note, some of y'all are timing me, I know, but watch. Exodus, Chapter 33, verse number 18, this is what he said. "And he said, 'I beseech thee, show me thy glory.'" He wasn't even worried about the rest of it. His focus began to be focused on God. May I leave you with this, and we'll pray, is we appreciate everything that you do in leadership, all of you, but here's the deal. If we don't have things in order, then we're not gonna have any joy. And if we don't have any joy, ain't nobody gonna be around us. And the order and the acrostics of everything we do should be this: Jesus, in my opinion, others, and then yourself. Without God, I mean, it's just impossible to make anything work. And so, I'm praying for you, our churches praying for you, if I can do anything for you. Thank you, Brother Chuck, for allowing me. Thank you, Chairman, for allowing me to be here. Praying for you guys today. I don't know how I'm gonna get out of here once I leave, but I'll find a way, that door, I think. But let's pray together, and then I'll lead you in the pledge to the flag. Father in Jesus' name, Lord, we call upon your name today. And, Lord, we're just so thankful for the platform that you have given to us today to share your love, to share the word, to be true to our calling. And God, I pray for this meeting today, as they partake of some issues. And, Lord, I pray that everything that we do would give you honor and glory. And, Lord, I pray for those that may not even know you, Lord, that this embraces them to search their hearts. But I thank you again for still the greatest country, the greatest county. I'm thankful to be a part of it. And, Lord, I'm asking for your protection in everything that we do. Thank you for the moms and the dads and the papas and the grandmamas and all that are here that are represented and be with them today. And just give us that joy, that as we walk into this world, Lord, that they'll see something different in us. And that's our prayer, as we pray together in Jesus' name. Amen. And then we do this here, they do this at the church, the kids do. They do like a titchin', salute, and pledge. I don't know if that's... Anyway, ready? Attention, salute, and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen. God bless you, and thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Jones, and thank you for bringing us that joy this morning. Try to emulate it. Under minutes, the July 14th, 2020 work session minutes and the board meeting minutes of July 14th are available for your review. Under announcements and positively Pauling this morning, it's gonna be a great day spent recognizing some of our first responders and law enforcement's folks. So, at this time, I'm gonna call Chief Pelfrey up, and he'll start it off. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, would it be possible for us to go ahead and show the positively Pauling clip as an intro?
Absolutely. I thought maybe this was gonna be the positively Pauling. So, just stand by, Joey.
I can do it as good as you guys can.
Okay, I got the emergency.
Yeah, come on out of the house. Move that two people inside the house, we can't get out.
Station 3, Station 8, Italian One, notification of residential structure fire. 95 Hillside Drive, 95 Hillside Drive, Tabor Trace subdivision, Cross Street, Mount Tabor Church Road.
Engine 3 is fine.
We're here today at a home in Paulding County that was tragically lost due to a fire, but everyone made it out alive and is doing well, thanks to Paulding County's Fire Department.
We would like to introduce you to the heroes of that day and get the story directly from them.
June 11th, we had a fire here, and it was bad, hottest thing I ever saw in my life. And so, they managed to get my great-granddaughter out of one window, and later on, they got my wife out from the back bedroom, and I was glad for that to happen. And it was a big relief when that did happen, so I appreciate everything they had done. They're good.
Well, we encountered pretty much heavy fire right at the garage, and then on the walk-around, all sides. So, pretty much, it was about 50% involvement of the house. This was the only part that was clear, which happened to be the bedroom side, so... Well, actually, we made our first attack. We stretched the line through here, tried to hit it at the origin of the fire in the kitchen, made an initial push. We got backed out due to conditions, and then that's when we went to Plan B, spoke with the homeowner, got an exact location, and then we happened to see the 15-year-old girl in that double window right there.
We noticed the 15-year-old girl was inside. Lieutenant and firefighter Garrett, we were able to get her out without having to make entry into the window and kind of give her to the sheriff's deputies who were there to take her up to the top of the road for medical.
We got done rescuing the younger girl. We looked down, and someone placed a ladder at the next window down as the fire was moving. We were standing just ahead of it. Followed Caldwell through that window, which ended up being a bathroom, and we're able to make our way to where the second victim was located.
I closed the bedroom door while firefighter Garrett searched him with our thermal imaging camera, tried to find the victim. He found her. We kind of met up in the middle of the room, realized we were probably gonna need some help to get her out. She was bedridden, and luckily, that time, I think, the squad and the next engine had got there, and they came in to help us get her out of the window.
The crew that went in right before us had got inside, noticed that there was heavy fire conditions down the hallway, and isolated the room by closing the door, which cut off a lot of the fire and the heat. We still had zero visibility, but we were able to keep the fire at bay while we were able to effect a rescue.
But once we got the patient out, gave her to the receiving crew, like he said, they brought her down. Conditions were kind of getting worse in the room, fire above us. Hadn't got into the actual bedroom yet. At that point, we started to kind of bail out one by one, headfirst. Once all four of us got out, us two and the receiving crew, we got out, and we kind of went to provide medical to her. She'd been drug away from the house since it was still pretty hot. And then, you know, fire was in that room pretty shortly after we had gotten out, so...
Being the assistant command, it was, it went very well. Guys did their jobs, they did what they're trained to do. We have trained this scenario several times. We couldn't ask for a better set of guys. Stressful, very stressful, but same time, it was, I knew that they could do their job, and I had their backs.
I want to say how proud I am of our firefighters. A lot of things they tell you, they tell you that they train on all these different scenarios, and they've trained for this scenario. But one of the things they can't train for is all the obstacles that they met here when they got on the scene. One of the things is they're at the road, and they have to extend handlines all the way down. Then they are encountering live wires arcing on the road. Then you encountered a child with autism, and then you've got an elderly female that's bedridden. They had to adapt and overcome, and that's what they did. And I'm just so proud of them. I'm proud of all public safety. I know we talk about Team Paulding. We always practice that here at the Fire Department and the Sheriff's Office, where, you know, they did fantastic job. The telecommunications, call-takers, they did a good job getting the information to us. I listened to the tapes. The family was very upset, so all in all, it was a team effort, and I'm just so proud to be the fire chief here at Paulding County and have employees like I have.
Okay, you know, although they do train, it says they train on this, this is not an everyday occurrence. We train all the time for this, but I've only given out these life safety awards we're gonna give out for our personnel. I've only given it out one other time, so we don't do this like candy, so it's very important. I did arrive on that scene that night when I heard the call go out, and it was amazing what they did. And the teamwork we talked about, and I want to emphasize that with the Sheriff's Office, they responded out there as well. They were there with our personnel, helping every way they could, taking people out of the windows. I'm not gonna steal the sheriff's thunder, but they did a fantastic job. 911, if they had not got that information to our personnel as they were arriving on the scene where they could make their plan, this possibly couldn't have happened. You know, they train for these on regular, you know, all the time, regularly, all the time, but the little things matter. And I don't know if you caught some of it, the thermal imager. If he had not had that thermal imager when he come off that truck, when he's trained to do, they had zero visibility, he may not have found that victim in that house. You talked about firefighter Caldwell said he closed the door to cut the fire off. These are all the things they train on, and we try to put that in, I guess it's a muscle memory thing, have the equipment when you come off the truck. And, you know, the FAOs are fire apparatus operators. They had to have this supply line, that's their lifeline. They're probably the most important people out there on the scene. They were able to get the fire lines run down this 200-foot driveway. So, they had a lot of things. You got your incident commander, he's out there making sure everybody's safe, making sure everybody's doing what they're supposed to do. So, it was an all-in-all team effort. It's a proud day for me to be able to give these awards out and recognize our employees, so thank you very much for allowing us to do that. And we'll go ahead and get this done, because we know you got a lot of things to do, and I know the sheriff wants to get up here as well.
Thank you, Chief.
And we're gonna practice social distancing here today, so I won't be shaking hands. We're trying to be good, and we're gonna call them in by units, the units they were on, because we did have 10, we'll have eight here, and we'll call them in a few at a time. First award goes to Lieutenant Michael Phelps. Firefighter Caleb Caldwell. FIO firefighter Jimmy Montessori. Lieutenant Brian Cowan from Engine 8. Firefighter FIO Collier, Josh Collier. Firefighter Jonathan Crandall. And I did want to recognize FIO Steve Maddox, who couldn't be here tonight. He's actually retiring. Tomorrow's his last shift, he'll be retiring, but he couldn't be here today, so we will get his award to him. And also, Captain Scott Brown couldn't be here tonight, so we thank them for their service as well. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Chief. Firefighters, thank you so much. I think you got a couple of those right out of high school. Young, young men. You were young once, weren't you, Chuck? We'll continue with the celebration of accomplishments with Sheriff Gullidge.
Thank y'all for letting us do this. Once again, I can't brag enough on the partnership we've got. It's kind of like a brotherhood amongst us, and I'm very proud to, I'm proud to say that it's that way now. It ain't always been that way. You know, we've, a lot of work's come into this. Y'all come on up front, guys, if you would. Extremely proud of my guys. Due to this fire that Joey was just talking about, these three guys was on scene and got put in for the life-saving award. We got a commendation committee that letters goes to, and once the letter went to the commendation committee, they changed it from a life-saving award to Medal of Merit, which is the second highest award that can be given to a deputy from our office. In order to receive a Medal of Merit, it's an award that's presented to a deputy who in the line of duty distinguishes him or herself by an act of valor, gallantry, or courage with imminent personal hazard to their life with knowledge of the risk. The acts must have been performed for the purpose of saving or protecting human life. There may be no margin of doubt or possibility of error in awarding this honor. Personnel must render themselves conspicuous by an act so outstanding that it clearly distinguishes this courage. Each one of these guys, we have an award for them, and I'm gonna read one. It kind of, all three of them done a little bit different, but it's kind of in a nutshell. Let me make sure I get my... I'm gonna say all three of them, because it's gonna be the same. Well, no, it ain't. I'm gonna do it separate. This is for Deputy Josh Matthews, I'm sorry, who distinguished himself in the performance of outstanding service to Paulding County Sheriff's Office and the citizens of Paulding County while assigned to the Uniform Patrol Division. Deputy Matthews selfishly risked his own personal safety when he voluntarily climbed a ladder toward a burning residence while fire surrounded the firefighters who were struggling to remove a disabled woman from inside the burning home. On June 11th, 2020, Corporal Bonnet, Deputy Myers, and Deputy Matthews, as well as two firefighters, heroic efforts helped save the female victim from a fiery inferno. If it were not for the selfless acts of the aforementioned individuals, the female victim would surely have perished. The singular distinctive actions of Deputy Matthews reflects great credit upon himself and the Paulding County Sheriff's Office. I'm gonna come through these one at a time, if y'all don't mind. in the performance of outstanding service to Paulding County Sheriff's Office and the citizens of Paulding County. While assigned to the Uniform Patrol Division, Deputy Myers selfishly risked his own personal safety when he voluntarily climbed a ladder toward a burning residence while fire surrounded the firefighters who were struggling to remove a disabled woman from inside a burning home. On June 11th, these three deputies, as well as two firefighters, heroic efforts helped save a female victim from a fiery inferno. If it were not for the selfless acts of the aforementioned individuals, the female victim would surely have perished. The singular distinctive actions of Deputy Myers reflect great credit upon himself and the Paulding County Sheriff's Office. Hundred percent also Medal of Merit to Corporal Brian Bonnet, who distinguished himself in the performance of outstanding service to Sheriff's Office and the citizens of Paulding County. While assigned to the Uniform Patrol Division, Corporal Bonnet selfishly risked his own personal safety when he voluntarily climbed a ladder toward a burning residence while fire surrounded the firefighters who were struggling to remove a disabled woman from inside the burning home. On June 11th, these three deputies, as well as two firefighters, heroic efforts helped save the female victim from a fiery inferno. If it were not for the selfless acts of these deputies and the firefighters, the female victim would surely have perished. The singular distinctive actions of Corporal Bonnet reflect great credit upon himself and the Paulding County Sheriff's Office.
Are you through, dude? I'd be remiss if I didn't say how proud we are of these guys, and we got one of our commissioners who's out of public safety, still very much involved. We appreciate Commissioner Hart so much, but Deputies Matthews, Myers, and Bonnet, we're so grateful. The pastor said, "What a great country we live in, what a great county. Y'all are part of what makes this county so great, and, you know, I consider you heroes, so thank you." Thank you, sir. We're not saying that. Thank you. Thank you so much, Sheriff Gullidge, for adding that to our time today. And the demands at 911 are heavy, and the personnel available there are sometimes in short supply, and that occurred today. So, David Mumford, who would be here to honor Amber Aiken, the lead communications officer, and Caleb Barnes, a communications officer, could not be here today, so when we regather on August 11th, David will make his presentations. Just wanted to mention that, though, in connection with all these public safety heroes. We have no bid awards today. Reports from committees and departments, we have none. Public participation on agenda items, we have none today. Consent agenda is none. We have no old business, so moving to new business. Item number two is a public hearing for the budget for fiscal year 2021. How did I skip that?
How could you forget?
I have no idea. Before we move into new business, we will back up to invited guests, and I'm proud to ask Mr. Robert Cabrera, who leads our Keep Paulding Beautiful Committee, for the great job that he does, to come up and bring us an update. I apologize, Robert.
That's okay. You hurt my one feeling.
Let's see if I can get this to work. I don't know if I can. Am I doing something wrong? Oh, yeah, they don't give me the sign in. Well, there we go. How about that? Well, good morning, and thank you for allowing me to be here, to make the presentation here for Keep Paulding Beautiful. The vision of Keep Paulding Beautiful is to create an atmosphere of cooperation and to lead by example in our community. KPB inspires and educates in order to show our neighbors that we live, play, and work in a community that is clean. We take pride in who we are and where we live. We, as a community, are better and stronger than we are as individuals. Our goal at KPB is to recognize and invite everyone to be a part of the solution, not part of the problem. We want to lead the way to a better life for everyone in our community. With that in mind, here are some of the highlights from the past year. Keep in mind, these highlights are from July 1st, 2019, through June 30th, 2020. There will be more detail about some of this information later in the report. This is one of my favorite parts. This list is a list of groups, organizations, companies that we deal with on a regular We either do projects, events, or we assist them in helping with their organization. But guess what? This is not the entire list. I forgot some things. I just couldn't get them on this one page, so I didn't want to take a second page. So, before I go on, I'm gonna read you the additional list. Marco's Pizza, Chick-fil-A, Cheeseburger Bobby's, Texas Roadhouse, Happy Hog Barbecue, American Cookie Company. Anybody noticing a pattern there? Walmart, Sam's, Publix, Dallas Farmer's Market, Regions Bank, New Seasons Church, West Bridge Church, Vintage 242 Church, Elrod's Garden Center, Lowe's, Home Depot, and Target. These are our groups, organizations, and companies that we deal with on a regular basis to do the programs that we do. In the year 2019, KPB was presented the President's Circle Award by Keep America Beautiful. This award recognizes a standard of excellence achieved by Keep Paulding Beautiful. In 2019, KPB was presented the Governor's Circle Award by Keep Georgia Beautiful Foundation. This award recognizes a standard of excellence achieved by Keep Paulding Beautiful. Here now are a few specifics. You notice the word "record" next to all those? Those would be the numbers that we've, some of the highest numbers we've ever had. In this timeframe, we did 239 events, which, of course, is a record. That is an average of 20 a month. We had 555 volunteers. That wasn't a record, but it was close. We had 1,633 volunteer hours. That's over $40,000 saved to Paulding County. We had 3,110 participants, also a record. The difference between a volunteer and a participant is like the ride for wishes. We had volunteers that worked the table, participants rode the bikes. In our education, we did 15 events, even during downtime. We didn't do any events during downtime, but we did 15 events total using the Reduce, Reuse, and Recycle Program and the Enviroscapes Program. These were done in schools, Paulding Enterprises, we did one there. During this same timeframe, we did two shred events. We had a total of 320 participants and 26 volunteers. Our total recycle for both those events was 16,209 pounds, or 8.1 tons of paper. Our total recycle for both those events was 16,209 pounds, or 8.1 tons of paper that did not go into the landfill. I'd like to point out that we had a great shred event on June 27th, that is of this year. We had a record number of participants at that event with 233, plus an additional 16 volunteers and workers. It was a really good day. It was fun. This one I'm really proud of. The chipper event we do in January, usually the first Saturday in January, the chipper event, we did 632 trees. The closest we've been to that was the year before, we did 175. It was pretty awesome. We also had the cooperation of the airport. We did an airport chipper event, and we did a Home Depot at the same time. We then took the mulch that we did and took it to the airport so that we could use it. And as you see on the left, you'll see the Museum of Flight. That's the entrance gate to that museum. The mulch you see is the mulch that we did, using the mulch from the trees that we did in January. Then the one on the right is actually a project we just did at the Chamber of Commerce. Same thing. We used the mulch from the airport, we planted some plants, we weeded some weeds, and we mulched some mulch, and we had a good time doing it. Everybody will recognize this. At least, hopefully, you will. This is the litter index. Litter Index is a tool used by Keep Polton Beautiful to attract litter volume for the entire county. Since Polton County is composed of four commission posts, we've separated the number by post. It is rated on a scale of 1 to 4, with 1 being the least amount of litter and 4 being the most amount of litter. These we do on a monthly basis, whereas we used to do it every year. And as you can see, this one is from, this is for, actually, the first six months of this year. All this shifts, because all these numbers and all these graphs look really good, don't they? I'm proud of them. I'm just a trash guy, and I'm able to make a graph. Pretty impressive, don't you think? Anyway. So what does it all mean? You giving him a hard time already? I knew that was going to come up. So we do have spots that, in each one of the posts, that at times needs attention, and we do trash flash mobs, we do the cleanups in those areas. We also work with the marshals to do any dump sites. Those are spotted as I go through the county, and I'm able to contact the marshals, and they jump right on it. In fact, we're working on a spot right now over off of 120 and 92. That would be Post 1.
Go get them.
So our next one is, this is, all the numbers and all the things I've just put out here, I think, have made an impact on what we're doing. So the next two slides are graphs related to this recycle center. I believe the cause and effect of what Keep Polton Beautiful has done is seen in the growth and the impact at the recycle center. The first slide is a graph that has to do with the number of citizens that use our recycle center on an annual basis. As you can see, the dates at the bottom are from 2015 through 2020. 2015, the total count for citizens using the recycle center was 12,060. In 2000, that was an average of 53 a day. In 2020, the total count was 25,928, which is an average of 115 per day. Just to bring it home, our county grew at 12%, while recycle center number grew at 112%. The last one, which is our overall tonnage for the recycle center, it has to do with the material that was actually brought into the center and sent back out. 2015, we processed 416 tons of material. In 2020, we processed 1,196 tons of material. That does not include the 8.1 tons of paper that went to ADS. This represents approximately a 300% increase in materials, while, again, the county has grown at 12%. We believe that the impact that Keep Polton Beautiful continues to have is seen in these numbers. We'd like to thank the Polton County citizens, all the organizations that back us, help us, guide us, and let us help them. I would like to thank the Keep Polton Beautiful Board, and most of all, I'd like to thank y'all. This Board of Commissioners has backed us in everything we do. You always say, "Yeah, let's do that. It'll be fun." So I just want to say thank you. Any questions?
You mentioned ADS, tons of paper. What's ADS?
ADS is the American Document Securities Company. We actually use them to do their, I believe, do the securities paper here, and they also come to our, it's New Seasons Church that's where we do it. They'll bring their trucks out, back them up, and we load into the back of their trucks. They take it to their facility where they shred it, and it goes into a recycle area. So we don't actually get that paper into our recycle area, it goes there. And they've been doing that with us for a few years now. We have a good relationship with them.
Other comments?
Thank y'all.
What, you didn't mention anything about the salary of all those volunteers?
I'll just say, we saved the county $40,000. So the volunteers get the same pay that I do when I'm out volunteering. Is that fair?
I knew the answer. I just, it's amazing.
Yeah, because you've gotten paid on that. You came out and did the airport stuff with us.
Yeah.
You didn't see anybody.
Wasn't as active.
Yep, so anytime you want to join in, just let us know.
Thanks so much, Robert.
Thank you.
What a great testimony, and also, you know, we talk so much about economic development, and the way our county looks because of what you all do is a benefit to our commercial growth, which we're all focused on. So huge thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
We'll straighten up in Post 3.
I bet when they get that dump site cleaned up in Post 1, Post 1 will go down below Post 4 on that index number. It was close. Is that why Post 4 was leading? Because we got a trash man as commissioner?
Well, now we go to new business with Robert sitting behind Julie back there. I just didn't see you. So we're going to have a public hearing this morning on the budget for fiscal year 2021, and Tabitha Pollard, our comptroller, our finance director, is going to start things off. At this time, I'll call the public hearing to order.
Good morning. Favorite public hearing of the year? It's our budget, this has been a little different budget year, though, than what we've had in the past couple of years. Usually, we've received a lot of public comment. We've reached out back in March, but the ability to get that in this COVID-19 era has been a little bit difficult. So this may be, it's been out for review since June 1st. Hopefully, the public have had the opportunity to review it. I did put some handouts in the back, and they're basically excerpts from the, what's been published online. So if you look online, this is about page 5 or 6, and we're going to go through that, and then I'll show you some of the differences in revenues that we've experienced this year and why we're able to propose the budget that we have proposed with no increase to millage rate. So first off, on the first page, we have several different funds. So primarily, at the public hearing for the budget, we're talking about the general fund. However, we have the general fund, you have fire tax, you have 911, you have special courts. Those are usually fines that are collected in the court system, and they have specific purposes. You have solid waste, which is an enterprise fund, so it's a flexible budget, meaning if you, if the funds come in, then the funds can be spent outside of what we have been contributed to the landfill. So that 1.2 million and the $200,000, those are, the 1.2 is the operational budget of the landfill, and the 200 is a contribution from the general fund. SPOST, those are sales tax that are collected at point of sale. Debt service, that's also on the tax bill. And CIP, those are generally grant funds or specific projects that we have, like when we have bond issues, the jail fund, it was built in the, using the CIP fund. Obviously, we don't have a lot going on there. And water and sewer, the 36 million that we have there is also a flexible budget. So it's, if the funds come in, they're available for use, and if they don't, then those have to be scaled back. So page 2 goes to the expenditure side of that. So you have a department listing of all of the departments with how much they spend in each of those funds. Page 3 is a continuation of the list of those departments, and when you get to the total, at the bottom, you'll have the budgeted funds for, the budget amounts for each fund. So what's included in this budget, another thing that's of interest most of the time are the personnel. So on your handout, it's the next page. I'll get my copy open. And this is a list of the personnel that was requested by each department. These were not approved to be able to have the revenues continuing to come in year after year after year. We had to scale this back to be able to roll back the millage rate. So the only ones that are included are in the detention center, there's one nurse, one civilian, and two detention officers. The rest, and over in fire, not listed here, but over in fire, there's 12 firefighters, one investigator, and one EMS chief. And those are the only new positions that are considered in the budget at this time. Then the next page you have are the capital outweigh. So it's a list of your items over $5,000, $5,000, and they usually have a life of more than a year. And here, you have a listing by department, you have a listing for fund, it states, in most cases, if it's new or replacement, requested, and then you have the approved amount. That approved amount, if you go to the bottom of the second page, you'll have a grand total of $2,897,756.97. That's included in the budget, and that's of the 4 million, 4.1 million that was requested. That's the gist of what's in there. Everything else looks very similar to the prior year. So your operating expenses, they look very similar. If it was in this year's budget, it's likely in next year's budget. There aren't a lot of differences. I want to show you the, some of the revenues that we've incurred, some of the differences, and ways that we're able to, we do have an increased amount of expenditures this year over last year, and we're able to do that by some tax revenues that aren't property tax revenues. So on the first page here, you can see our property tax revenues do have an increase. We had a millage rate reduction, so the millage rate for last year was 6.079. The rollback rate was 5.7, and we have prepared this budget with a millage rate of 5.65. The increase comes, there's two components to the rollback calculation. One is the rollback, it's based on reassessment, so we rollback for the reassessment value. Then you have other changes, which are new construction, as well as, we'll talk about title of lorum tax in a minute. As you increase title of lorum tax, you reduce your lorum tax, so it's a reduction. The net effect is a $495,000 increase. Your other taxes are $2.9 million increase, and I'm going to show you that in just a second. The others are very small, so you don't have a lot of, a lot of difference, some up, some down. So our title of lorum tax for this year, interest rates being 0% for 84 months encourages people to buy new cars. When they purchase new cars, they pay a title of lorum tax, and so that has spiked. The blue line is 2020, so you can see how much of an increase we've seen. This current budget that we have, I'm a little uneasy about budgeting at the $700,000 mark for every month, so we have brought that down to just under $600,000 to consider the prior years as well. So we've done a good average, trying to consider the prior years as well as the increase from this year, and we have a budget of $583,000 a month, or $7 million for the year. In January, we'll review that, see if those are coming in. If they are, then we will have additional funds, but we don't want to have to cut back. So if we budget for those and they don't come in, we'd have to cut back mid-year, and we'd rather go the other way around. I believe everybody would. Sales tax, sales tax has increased as well. So we have a million and a half increase budgeted for sales tax, which is just under this 1.4 million, so it's about $1,350,000 is what we have in the budget for sales tax. Our sales tax, we know, should continue to increase, and I think some of our increase has been during times that people have been at home, they've shopped at home, and so the sales tax is coming back to Polton, where if they were traveling to shop, maybe they would have went, gone to another county to shop, and that may have stayed there. So it has encouraged citizens to, with encouraging them to stay home, they've shopped home, and it's increased our sales tax. So hopefully, that will continue. Expenses, here, this is just a breakdown of what our expenses are. 37% goes to public safety, and these are general fund. These are general fund only. So if you broke it down with all funds, it would be a little different. Public safety would increase, and your judicial would increase, but this is just a breakdown of general fund expenditures. So public safety, 37%, public works, 21%. Your general government, those are the commission, their finance, their human resources, their information technology. It's departments that touch all of the different departments and judicial. So unless you have any questions, I'll sit down, and we'll see if we have any comments.
Tabitha, on the TAVT tax?
Yes, sir.
April, I guess it was just post-COVID, people hadn't started buying the cars yet, way down below 2 of the years. That April blue line?
Yes, April blue line is lower.
Just caught my attention.
It is lower. And that is, these are maybe a month off, so that, I mean, it's coming in to me a month after it's been collected at the tax commissioner, and so that would actually, could actually be Marches, and March is when everybody was stay at home, don't go anywhere, really didn't know what was going on, and then in April, you started to get out again, and the interest rate went down, and I think they're selling cars over the phone right now.
Yeah, this time, I'll turn the podium over to any citizens who would like to make a comment on the budget for fiscal year 2021. Well, seeing that no one is coming forward, Tabitha, I'll just thank you for your report, and I'll close out the public hearing at this time. Item number 3 is discuss action to adopt ordinance 20-07, amending the Polton County Code of Ordinances Chapter 6. Code of Ordinances, Chapter 66, entitled Sewer, Section 66-154, limited discharges into systems. Ms. Ashmore to report.
Thank you. Let me give you a little bit of background about where this comes from and why, why we're recommending it. Under the Clean Water Act, which is, was adopted in the 70s to protect water quality in our streams, there's the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. That's what you hear me talking about, the NPDES permits. They're the permits that we're regulated under for our discharges into the surface waters of the state. There is, so that protects the stream from what we're discharging. There's a secondary program called the Industrial Pretreatment Program. And that is intended to protect our plants and ultimately, our discharges. The, due to the size of our system, that program is currently being administered by the State of Georgia Environmental Protection Division. As we grow, that industrial discharge permitting will become a responsibility of Paulding County. So who is regulated under this? If there's a significant industrial discharge that makes up more than 5% of our flow, they fall into that category. There are categories of industries that are required to be permitted and monitored. And these permits essentially list the parameters that they can discharge up to, and have the reporting requirements to, back to the state of what they have discharged to our facilities. We currently only have one. And we have one facility that is discharged. And as EPD was renewing their permit, reissuing permit, they were being, they were very challenged by some of the language that is in our present permit, or in our present ordinance. Our current ordinance actually restricts an industrial discharge to a level that is lower than what's coming from a residential home in Paulding County. And the, so we, we are recommending a modify, we've worked with EPD and are recommending a modification to the language that will allow, that will move us away from a 250-milligram-per-liter discharge to more of a narrative standard for suspended solids and for biochemical oxygen demand, or any oxygen-demanding pollutant that's in the discharge, that, to that which will cause interference with the wastewater facilities. This will allow EPD to issue a permit, us to monitor and ensure that they continue. They've been discharging in a manner that will interfering. And this morning, actually, the chairman asked me a question about what does this mean for the future? In the future, as we have to develop our own industrial pretreatment program, we will actually have a much more comprehensive language in our, in our ordinance to be able to permit them ourselves. And there will be, a lot of numeric standards will be required, very, and it tends to be very detailed, program that I'm most familiar with. I mean, you have not only your oxygen-demanding limits, but also you get into priority pollutants, metals, and other organics that can interfere with our treatment plan.
Any questions for Ms. Ashmore this morning? As I've said to you many times, I think, Lori, I've learned more about sewer than I ever thought I would ever know. No questions? Not even you, Ron?
What do you mean, not even me? I was just agreeing with you on learning more than, about sewer than you ever thought possible. It's one of those, one of those surprises of getting to be on the commission board.
Right. Okay, well, we're gonna keep Ms. Ashmore up at the podium, and she's gonna tell us some about number four, which is discuss action to authorize additional funding for Brown and Caldwell under the program management contract for the Richland Creek Reservoir in the amount of $150,000. And we're very privileged to have Kelly Comstock with us today to answer any additional questions, I guess. Thank you, Kelly.
Brown and Caldwell was selected back in 2014 to serve as the program manager for the Richland Creek Reservoir Program. Back in 2016, we, was the last funding authorization that we did. And that was intended to get us through 2019. And here we are in 2020. Through some very effective utilization of those funds and streamlining of personnel, we have been able to extend that funding to current. But we do not have adequate dollars to keep Brown and Caldwell functioning as a functional member of our team through the end of the year, to get us through finalizing construction and bringing the plant online, making sure we've got all of our permits in, in place, and get, and start, starting that pumping into our distribution system. So we are requesting $150,000 to be authorized to cover the program activities through the end of the year. And while they provided in your backup material, the anticipated level of effort associated with those tasks. And we did have the Water and Sewer Advisory Board reviewed this at their last meeting and recommended approval. This is under enterprise funds. And also, just a side note, we're currently scheduled to do Richland Creek Program update to you all next month.
Thank you so much. Kelly, do you have anything you'd like to add while you're here?
Yeah, I actually would like to say, it's been an honor for us to work with Paulding County implementing this program. It's one of the most amazing things in the Southeast that any utilities got going on. It's been a privilege to work with you. And I did just want to announce that a couple of weeks ago, we got the final approval from EPD to continue filling the reservoir. And so every day, it gets a little bit higher, and that will continue. There's no more restrictions other than how quickly we're allowed to fill it. So I'll be pleased to be here for your next meeting and give you an update with some really cool photos of some of the progress that's happening. So, thank you.
Have a kayak party out there, man?
That's right, yeah.
Never had one of those, but it sounds fun.
I'm in. Let's do it.
Stover said he was gonna throw you in.
I can swim, Brian, that doesn't...
Well, number five is discuss action to adopt ordinance 20-08, an ordinance amending Section 119 in various penalty provisions of the Official Code of Paulding County, to be presented by our county attorney, Mr. Jason Phillips.
Commissioners, this applies for the Paulding County magistrate court for ordinance violations. Typically, when you find yourself with a citation either from Animal Control or the Marshals Bureau, and if you don't pay your bond in advance and you actually go to court, in Paulding County, we have set minimum fines for violations. There's a set minimum for your first offense, your second offense, and your third offense. Typically, a judge in many jurisdictions has discretion to go a fine up to $1,000. In Paulding, we have, we have a bottom, depending upon what, what number of citation this is, what number of conviction this is for you. The goal of this ordinance is really twofold. One, it's to provide, for the most part, uniformity for all the ordinance violations that we have. There are a few exceptions out there, but those stand on their own. But this will provide, for the most part, across-the-board uniformity. And the second goal here is to bring Paulding County's minimum fines more in line with our neighbors. Right now, if you are convicted of, your five most typical violations are littering, junk vehicles, leash law, animal cruelty, or no proof of rabies. Right now, a first offense carries a $300 minimum fine, second offense, $500, and third offense, $1,000. We are, we've had this in place for several years, and our jurisdiction is typically higher than our surrounding jurisdictions. The proposed amendment would take those minimums from 300, 500, and 1,000 to 100, 300, 500. Having prosecuted in the court for several of the, the last couple of decades, several years for the last couple of decades, I would recommend this change because I think it gives the court more discretion. I think it also hits that first offender a little less severely. Because as it stands right now, if you plead guilty to littering and you show up in court, you're gonna get hit with a minimum, once the surcharges are added in, $405 fine. So that is the proposal. Be happy to answer any questions you all have.
You covered it, and thank you for the backup material. At this time, I'm gonna call on the commissioners and see if, I'll just go down the line here. I think it's time to start back with you, Ron, and see if you have any comments or additional announcements. Thank you.
I got a comment or two I'll make. It's my opinion that in this day and age, the word hero is thrown around a little bit too much. And I would submit to you that a hero is literally the person who charges towards the burning building instead of turning to run away from it. It was really sobering to sit and watch the members of Team Paulding this morning that received those awards from Gary and Joey. It's just a real honor to sit in this chair always, but felt a little extra special this morning because I was looking at those folks, I mean, people have their family with them tonight because those folks charged into a burning building. And it's hard to, hard to compare that to really anything else. You put yourself in harm's way. And when you, when you think about it, every, every one of our first responders, every shift they go on, whether they get on that truck, or put on that bulletproof vest, or whatever they do to get ready for their shift, they, they go into it knowing that something like that could happen. And we hope it never does, but we understand that it does. And I just, I just feel really privileged to, to be in a, in a place where first responders are appreciated and recognized the way that we appreciate them and the way we were able to recognize them this morning. Because in all areas of our country, right now, that's not the case. And there are people who not only don't appreciate them, but have an outright hatred for them. And I think that's wrong. Because these people put their own selves at risk to protect and save the lives of people in their communities. And this is just one example of that. And so Gary, Joey, Trevor, David's not here, but all of our first responders and all the people that work under those, under those leaders that we have in our first, in our first responder groups, I, I appreciate you. I know that, I know there's at least one family at home tonight that really appreciates you guys, because they've got their, they've got their family members that they might not have otherwise, so.
Good job, Ron. How do you follow that? I appreciate what you guys do. You gave me chills, and you made me cry, and I am not a crier. I wanna do a shout-out to Dina Sanfilippo. She's going through a very hard time right now. She has stage IV cancer. If you would please, just keep her in your prayers. She really needs us all right now.
Our brother Chuck Hart said that he would be willing to say a prayer for her right now.
Okay.
Listen, ma'am. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we do thank you, Lord, that we can, we can come to you, Lord, and we can present you with our needs, Lord. And today, on behalf of Ms. Dina, we want just to, to lay this burden, you know, that she's got, and this physical ailment that she's got at your feet, Lord Jesus. And we want you to have your will. We, we pray for healing, Lord, but we know that your ways are not always our ways. And, and Lord, if it not be that way, Lord, please just comfort the family, just make them have a, just a, just a peace that, that we can't even understand, Lord Jesus. We pray that for Dina today. But we do pray for that special healing. If it be your will, Lord, that you would just, just go in there and you would heal her in such a way, Lord Jesus, that, that she could, she could beat this thing, Lord. And we know that all things are possible with you, will at your feet. We love you, we honor you.
Thank you, thank you. Well, my announcement would be something that's a long time coming. Almost two years, almost two years ago, we had Governor Deal come out and talk about $35 million bucket of money for an aviation maintenance academy or maintenance school at Paulding County Northwest Atlanta Airport. And we had, I remember, like it was yesterday, Representative Gravely coming through that second door back there, kinda waving, and he was gonna go to closed session with us to tell us about it. And about a year ago, Commissioner Stover, along with two of the other representatives, Mom Tahan and Gullett, actually flew to Washington DC to talk with the airport manager of the FAA regarding progress in, in being able to, to get some releases we needed environmentally for that school. And it's been a long time coming, but last week, the southeastern director of the FAA actually, Terry Tibbetts received the letter from him, and I also signed on yesterday representing the board, that that 2.964 acres at the airport will be developed into a maintenance school, be designed this year, and should be funded next year for the construction. So, so grateful for that. I think it'll mean a lot to our county and our whole community, our region, to train young mechanics. They may not be that young, but whoever signs up. So that's my announcement today.
I wanna kinda piggyback on, on what Ron said just a minute ago. And Joey, I wanna thank you. And I know that there was times whenever we were growing, and you couldn't train people. We couldn't provide the training that we always needed. We had to go on our days off and everything else. And, and Lord knows, we remember times when we did it for free. You know, we were volunteers, and, and it was more of a community-type event. But I'm gonna tell you something. What happened over there was a result of a lot of training. And you guys make it happen, you provide that training for them. I know just recently, you started providing the medical training where these guys could get it. And, and you know what? They're, these little guys, they're out there and they are, they're working, they're working themselves to death trying to provide for their family. And they sacrifice when they're here for a little bit less money than what they probably could make in the secular world. So they do have to get out there and do things, and I'm glad that we provide that for them. And it's just like Keith said, one thing could have not happened in that scenario, and it would've been a different outcome. Somebody didn't shut a door, somebody didn't set the ladder upright, somebody didn't heal. I mean, it's just, it takes a team effort. And I'm so thankful that this county has risen to the point to where we can have enough people on a scene to actually, you know, evoke some sort of the, this couldn't have happened 10 years ago, could it, Joey? I mean, you got four guys showing up with four engines, and you're all trying to figure out what to do. It's, it's a little different animal that we got now. And I'm so thankful that you guys have grown it into what it is and have supported it. Thanks.
Yeah, I'm just gonna meet, you know, with school, starting back in the next couple of weeks. Just, you know, I'd like to ask everyone in the county here, just remember, the ones making those decisions have a lot of tough decisions to make. You know, a lot has been thrown at them, thrown at us, and we've had to make a lot of tough decisions. So just remember that, you know, whatever side you stand on, kids wanna go back to school or not go to school, virtual, you know, who knows the right answer yet, but just pray for all the ones, that all the kids going back to school, the ones making all the... all the tough decisions also.
Thank you, Commissioners. We have no executive session today. No one has signed up for public participation on non-agenda items. I will seek a motion to adjourn. Make a motion to adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kaker. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned.